Alright, the time has come for the Monday, April the fifteenth, 2019, regular council meeting. Roll call please.
Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Velco.
Here.
Alderman Taylor.
Present.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Alderman Seager.
Present.
Alderman Moseo.
Present.
Alderman Villalobos. Alderman Nusa.
Present.
Alderman Tempest. Mayor Cunningham.
Leading us in invocation will be Prophetess Deborah L. McCourly of House of Prayer Church. And immediately following the invocation will be led by the pledges of allegiance by our cadets who are moving, who will be going to the armed forces. All rise please for the invocation.
Dear Lord, Heavenly Father, we humbly invoke your presence in this room, Lord. Father, I ask that you cover each and every council member, Father. Give them an ear to hear and a heart to understand, Father. God, give them desire as Solomon had, Lord, when he asked you for wisdom, wisdom to lead your people. Lord, I ask that all things that are done in this room this evening be done in decency and order. I pray that your Holy Spirit help us to communicate with one another with respect, Father. I pray that all our purposes be led forth and guided by you, Father. I bind up the enemy that comes to kill, steal, and destroy, and I loose your Holy Spirit in this room, on every soul, Father, on every person, Lord. Oh, Father, I pray that the time that is, we come together on this evening be productive, Lord, that changes be made in our community that we can be proud of, Lord. Father, I pray for every municipality that is represented in this room, Father. I encourage the strength and the power for us to come together in unity, one body, one family, one city, Father. I realize that we come from all different places, Father, we're all different shades, God, but there is one God, and we look to you, Father, to guide us and lead us on this evening, God. We look to you, Father, to help us to understand one another, Father, to treat each other with love and respect, Lord. Oh, God, we thank you and we praise you on this evening, Father. We don't proceed to have all the answers, God, but we know that you do, Father. And I ask that each and every member of the body of the council, hallelujah, seek you first before all decisions are made, Lord, that all decisions are made in the consideration of our children, God, that we are providing a community for our children to grow up and be safe, Lord, that they can be protected and educated, God, that they can be, hallelujah, fundamental part of our community, Lord. Father, we continue to pray for the jobs, God, in the city, Lord. Father, we pray for the organizations, the strength and the revitalization, Lord. We pray that Waukegan becomes a city that is set up on a hill that has a light that shines all throughout this nation. We pray that we're able to come together and do things that no other city is able to do, Lord, and that is work together and build a community that we can all be proud of. Lord, we pray all these prayers in your son's name. Hallelujah and amen.
Amen. The next one. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mayor's comments. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'm happy to report that the city of Waukegan received a very prestigious award for the comprehensive annual finance report fiscal year ending April thirtieth, 2018. I would like to commend Finance Director and her entire team for guiding us and achieving this award again this year. I think this is our consecutives, is that correct, Tina? Six consecutive years, so thank you. Congratulations to you and your team. Sir, could you? Thank you, sir. Alderman Villalobos was not able to attend tonight's meeting because of a family emergency. Our wishes and prayers will be with him and with him and his family at this time. We remain, ethane oxide, we remain on pace to soon have a contract for the independent air testing for ethane oxide. We appreciate Lake County Health Department for providing technical assistance with drafting this contract and continue to thank, thanks to the public for their ongoing interest. City stickers. Once again, I remind, I'm reminding residents that city stickers are on sale. As always, you can purchase them online, through the mail, or in person here at City Hall. In addition to weekday sales, City Hall will be open this Saturday, April twentieth, and the following Saturday, April twenty-seventh, from eight AM to noon. Census, the city of Waukegan and US Congressman Brad Schneider, along with Forefront and Common Cause Illinois, will be hosting a briefing on Tuesday, April twenty-third, from six to seven PM at City Council Chambers, on the importance for community leaders with the upcoming census and the best practice for reaching hard-to-count communities. You are welcome to attend and share with the community. Upcoming events. The city is hosting a proposal, I'm sorry, the city is hosting a proposed fiscal year 2020 budget public meeting right here in City Council Chambers next Monday, April twenty-second, at five PM. Earth Day activities will take place over the next few weeks. Details are on the city's calendar and events include, there are ward cleanups taking place throughout the city this Saturday. Check your, check our website and our social media this week for more details. This Saturday from eight-thirty to eleven-thirty, the Waukegan Public Library will have free document shredding. This is an Earth Day celebration at Bourne Park, correction, there are, there is an Earth Day celebration at Bourne Park on Monday, April twenty-second, from six to eight PM. A Waukegan Harbor host cleanup on Saturday, April twenty-seventh. The first Amstead cleanup of this year on Saturday, April twenty-seventh, from nine to eleven AM. There will be free document shredding on Sunday, April twenty-eighth, from ten AM to one PM at Thriving Financial, nine-twenty-seven West Glen Floor Avenue. On May first, from nine-thirty AM to twelve PM, the Roberti Community House is hosting their seventh annual neighborhood cleanup. On Thursday, April eighteenth, the Genesee Theater is hosting a Pink Floyd tribute group, Break Floyd. Get your tickets online or at the box office, the box office. Proof by David Auburn, Auburn is at Three Brothers Theater on Friday and Saturday nights through the April, through April twenty-seventh. The Waukegan High School presents The Music Man on Thursday, May seventh, May second through Saturday, May fourth, at Trap Auditorium. Alright, presentation time. Waukegan has witnessed a lot of positive growth throughout the city this past year, and we're proud to honor tonight one specific development that has offered a lot to Waukegan. Bridge Development Partners have successfully, has successfully built in Waukegan the Bridge Point North Business Park Phase Two, which totals nine-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand square feet and has created jobs and revenue for the city. At the 2019 Chicago Commercial Real Estate Awards, Bridge Development Partners were named Developer of the Year. We are so happy to have them here in Waukegan, and I'd like to invite Mr. Mark Hauser, Senior Vice President of Development, to accept our Waukegan Proud Award. Mark?
As the mayor said, my name is Mark Hauser, I'm with Bridge Development Partners. The award is given annually to the developer who, on this occasion, was for industrial development throughout the Chicago area. Obviously, the Waukegan development was critical, we built, we just finished our fifth building there, and we're gonna start six, seven, and eight soon, and we've got about two million square feet that we've developed, and we have about another million square feet to go, so we're very pleased, leasing has been very good, we've got Amazon, we've got Medline, ThermoFlex, a number of other things, so it's been a great experience for us, been great to work with Waukegan on this, so thank you.
On behalf of City of Waukegan, Mayor Alderman, I'm thanking for one, choosing Waukegan as a place to start this development, and one, showing that you can have a showcase of the government in our community. So with that, we present you with the Waukegan Proud Award to your organization. And as always, we get the Alderman and everybody with us. I gotta put you in the right spot, correct? Come over a little bit. Uh-oh. You ready?
It's just a tiny bit here. Alright, please, everybody, we're almost right here.
Thanks, we really appreciate it. Good work with it. Major Bell will present, will talk about the next Waukegan Proud Awards right now. I need to go ahead and move that back, alright?
We have eight cadets that are, you've got a better voice than that, Major, come on, I've heard it plenty of times.
We have eight cadets currently who have committed to enlisting in the US Armed Forces, and we're here to recognize them tonight. We have, let me, let me make sure I can get them all right, okay. So we have, maybe get to the right person as I announce them. Okay, Monica Amazon, what service are you enlisting in? US Army?
US Army.
Emily Collins, United States Army? Amanda Flores, United States Marine Corps? Jorge Andino, United States Marine Corps? Okay, we're at fifty-fifty here, let's see, here we go. Nicholas Lennon is not here, he's babysitting his brother today, but he's, I believe, United States Army. Leonardo Suarez, United States Army? Jimmy Lopez, Jimmy, what are you? United States Army? And Enrique Mendoza, United States Army, National Guard.
You know, often, our young men and young ladies are not given enough praise for what they do. You will see one of our young men or young ladies are not doing the things we want them to do, you will see that splash on the front page of the News-Sun, or somewhere in social media. These young men and young ladies have done everything their mom and dad, their loved ones, their leaders have asked. We in the city of Waukegan will let them know we're proud of them for what they're doing. We just gave you a Waukegan Proud Award, and we want you to know as you move through life that you are somebody special, you've done the right things you're supposed to do, and your hard work is paying off, and for that, we appreciate you and we thank you, and keep up the, keep up the great work, God bless. Alright, before you go, though, before you go, now they didn't know this one, these two gentlemen, Major Bell and First Sergeant Cunningham, both are retiring, if I'm not mistaken, they're retiring this year.
Wow.
First Sergeant Cunningham said two months. Major Bell?
I'll stick around for a couple more after that, but before 2019 is over, I'll be gone.
They combined, they've been a part of the Waukegan Junior ROTC program, Help Me Out, forty years.
Forty years.
Forty years, combined forty years. And I was told earlier Doc had a little bit, because he has a lot more information than I do. Go ahead, Doc.
Well, Major Bell is truly one of our own, he graduated from Waukegan nineteen-seventy-four, spent twenty years in the regular army, he's been twenty years here at ROTC, he's been he's been ten years as a chairman of the educational portion of ROTC, and he's a great deal of the reason, these two gentlemen are the great deal of reason, ROTC is what it is today. Sergeant Cunningham, no relation to the mayor, came from Lancaster, South Carolina, and he intends to retire, back to his hometown. He spent twenty-three years in the regular army, and he spent nineteen with Waukegan ROTC. These men have combined to have a volunteer, ROTC is not required, when I was there, it was required for every male to have two years of ROTC to graduate, okay, it's an elective now. They have over five-hundred-and-thirty-five children in this program of discipline, and that's what they give them, unbelievably important. Sixty percent now are women. I'll just give you a little story. So last year, often he gets invited over to see the drill team, and so I was over the drill team, and one of the lady commanders was in charge of them, and they were going back and forth across the cafeteria left and right, and pretty soon, she says, "Your hand's wrong." "Oh, man, not mine." Okay, somebody else, they come by the next time, "Your eyes aren't right." Afterwards, I was supposed to meet her, I was afraid to meet her, 'cause she's in command. This is a high school kid, alright? That's why we ranked first in the nation, first. So, a knockout drill where they keep on going until you make a mistake and you get knocked out, okay? We're first with individuals, all services, wherever they come from, which will be over in Daytona at the end of the month, Daytona, Florida, alright? We are ranked number one in males, and number two for female drill in the world.
Another ranking that we have nationally is Drill Team Exhibition, that's where the whole drill team is working over and over, and we are ranked fourth in the nation, alright? We have, we also have a rifle team, used to be attached to ROTC up until about eight years ago, now it's an ISA sport, we had both drill teams up until that time. The shooting team and the RSH team were mostly the same people, but there was two separate whatever. Couple of years ago, the administration of the school decided not to continue that, and we no longer shoot it with twenty-twos, these are all air rifles, very, very expensive air rifles. But I want to thank both these gentlemen, I've had, I've had contact with them for most of the, most of the twenty years they're there, off and on, alright? They've just been wonderful to give the discipline to these children to carry on. I understand they're carrying on, many of them are going on in education, are going on in military, but the ones that don't still carry that discipline that they have given them. I want to thank you, gentlemen. You're on, you're on, real quick. Alderman Moseo.
Being at the school, I know these two guys personally, and I just want to tell them thank you for everything they've done, I know the hard work and volunteer they put in. Major Bell, I miss our weekly conversations of fixing the world's problems, but since we're at different campuses, that's fallen off, but I appreciate all the talks we've had. Sergeant Cunningham, thank you so much for your service, you guys are wonderful, thank you.
Absolutely.
One thing, I would be remiss if I didn't say this, we also have a academic team in JROTC, and for the first time last June, our team went to the national championship in Washington DC, and out of one-thousand-seven-hundred Army ROTC schools, we're ranked number seventeen. So, we are very proud of our, our young people, and I'll tell you, in Waukegan, as, as the mayor said, is, you don't hear it enough, we've got great students at Waukegan, we have great families, good, solid values being taught to our young people, and it's been an honor, it's been a privilege to, to work with these young people for twenty years. I don't know if you want to say anything.
Yes. On my way out. It, it has definitely been a privilege and honor to be a part of the community, the school. Being with these young people each and every day, been drilling for nineteen years from day one, and, you know, to leave it, it's kind of hurt a little bit, but on to the next chapter, and I really appreciate all the support that we've gotten from the Waukegan School District, Waukegan City, Waukegan Township, and everyone in Lake County. Thank you.
So on behalf of the mayor, all city councils, and citizens of Waukegan, we present you with a Waukegan Proud Award. Now Jane is gonna direct us on what to do.
Big round of applause for our new member. I know it was, it's gonna get even more interesting.
Alright, alright. Most of all, it would have been Bolton, second by Alderman Taylor, to approve the regular meeting minutes from Monday, April one, 2019. Any questions to the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Audience time, Madam Clerk.
Coming up. Thank you. Thank you so much. So we have three minutes, and it's gonna start with Ms. Joyce Evans.
Good evening, my name is Joyce Evans, I'm a counselor at Waukegan, Illinois. I'm gonna ask you a question, and I want you to think about it, because it's a very serious question, a lot of times, you can't get the importance of it unless you're sitting there watching it. If you were driving down the street, and you killed, hit a kid and killed him, how would you feel? That would change your life forever, ever. Like I said, just talking about it is difficult, when you're sitting there watching it, it's totally different. I had dispatch on the phone one night when I called, and I was just screaming, "Joyce, what's the matter, what's the matter?" And I couldn't, she says, "Everything okay." What, what was happening is, I don't know if the curfew in Waukegan is being enforced, but I'm sitting there, and I'm watching these kids running out in the street, standing in front of cars, saying, "Kill, kill me," then they run back in the house, and, and, you know, just to see this, the cars coming, you don't see anybody out there, then all of a sudden, you get this close to somebody, and you're about to hit them. And you're seeing, I'm out late at night a lot of times, and I see kids ten years old out after twelve-thirty at night. Some years ago, some of the people here might remember from years ago, I come up with a plan, and then I came across the Waukegan papers, sock it to their pocket. A lot of people claim that they couldn't do anything with their kids, but my plan was, and it worked. You see children out after hours, you pick them up, take them down to the police department, call their parents, and when their parents, then you find their parents, when their parents pay that fine, you don't see them out no more. If that's the way we have to go back to, I think it's, it's good, because some of the problems that Waukegan is gonna start investing in is children after hours. I see children all ages out after twelve-thirty, and I didn't know until I went to court today. It was two people there who had their children there for curfew, and Wixstrom, I guess, that's the city attorney, and he had some, what do you do, asked the parent, "What do you do for a punishment?" They said, "Nothing." So if they can keep doing nothing and get no punishment, then where's it gonna end up to? Think about you getting a child and killing, it's gonna change your life forever.
Thank you.
Thank you for your attention this evening. In the absence of Alderman Tempest, I just want to make a brief and a couple announcements about some activities going on in the sixth ward. I don't know if this is proper protocol, but I'm gonna do it anyway. The mayor mentioned that we have the Community Camp Days coming up in Waukegan, and we're gonna start in Waukegan this Saturday at nine AM to twelve AM at the corner of Jackson and Glen Ford. Additionally, Alderman Tempest and I have begun working to, we're gonna put out three dumpsters for the community usage over the course of the month of May and June. The dates and locations have been established, and we'll be announcing those at a later date. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, I had a few more announcements than I thought, so I'm gonna run through very quickly, and then give you two pieces of good news. Just so everyone is aware, the next evening book club is gonna be May seventh, reading midnight at the Bright Ideas Bookstore, if anybody wants to join me, we're happy to find you a copy. The Earth Day Shred, as the mayor mentioned, is this Saturday from eight-thirty to eleven-thirty, it is open to the public at our back parking lot, so, and as I understand it, they're not limiting how much paper you can bring, so, good time to clean things out. We will be closed for Easter Sunday, so planning accordingly. And a very important thing I'd like everybody to put on their calendar is that we are going to be celebrating Ms. Sandy's forty-nine years of service at the Waukegan Public Library on May eighteenth from one to five, so you have a whole month to plan, please drop by. If you check our website, you can submit memories, or you can come that day and submit memories to our scrapbook for Ms. Sandy to take home, so, she was very important to many, many people in this community. Just two other things, we have been approved as a summer site for lunches for children, so we will be providing lunches this summer for kids visiting the library, Monday through Friday. We'll have more details then coming up on that. And lastly, in terms of the census, the Waukegan Public Library with the city of Waukegan as a partner has been awarded an Illinois County In-Census 2020 grant, which will be facilitated by the library with lots of partnership with the city and with various partners within the city, so we have a lot of work to do to make sure we bring good census education and create a safe place for filling out the census at the library. So you'll be hearing more about that as we go on, so that's a one-year grant, so we're very excited about that. I ran through that really fast, are there any questions, anything else I can add for you? Great, we'll see you there.
Thank you, thank you. Mr.- Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Ralph Peterson.
Mr. Peterson, stop the clock. Mr. Peterson, please turn this way, sir. Thank you. Mr. Peterson, this way, sir. Thank you.
I'm kind of sad tonight. And the reason why I'm sad tonight, and I refuse to turn my back...
Mr. Peterson, stop the clock, please. Mr. Peterson, please this way. Thank you. Right there. Right there, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Mr. Peterson, you're out of order, sir.
I refuse to turn my back to the taxpayers.
Mr. Peterson.
And I'm here tonight to express...
Stop the clock. Stop the clock. Mr. Peterson.
I'm here to express sadness. No longer will decisions be made that's best for the city. Most decisions that point forward...
Mr. Peterson, you're out of order, sir.
...will be made by big money gambling.
Mr. Peterson.
This council that you see sitting up here now will look different real soon. And the people that will be sitting up here, they have been bought. They were bought. And they're going to do what they're told.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
So I'm just saying, citizens, it's a sad, it's a sad day in Wakegan. Whenever big money can come in and just take over our town. And like I say, I'm not going to turn my back. I'm not going to turn my back. You people are the pants, citizens. That's not right.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
I'm not finished talking. My time is not up. And do not interrupt me again.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. That's how we want you to, this way, sir.
So as I was saying, please...
Mr. Peterson, you're out of order, sir.
Please be aware.
I'm going to ask you to be removed, sir. You're out of order, sir. Please turn this way, sir. Why don't you do this thing? Why don't you just look at here and have a look at the orders? That'll work out, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
It's a sad day in Wakegan, audience. It truly is.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Kathy Charity.
Watch your language, sir.
Sir, thank you, sir. At your time, sir. Thank you, sir. You can't be removed. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Mr. McLemore, you're not at speaking right now, sir. If you keep interrupting, you will be removed from the chamber, sir. All right, sir? You can't speak, but while the person has the floor, while the person has the floor. All right, sir? Do we understand each other, sir? Thank you, sir. Sorry about that, ma'am. Continue. Hi, Kathy Charity, 900 block of McAllister Avenue in Wakegan. At the last meeting on April 1, 2019, I had asked a question on whether Wakegan was a sanctuary city or not. Okay. And the reason why I asked that, because I said, all the streets going east and west, they have red, green, and white stores flying, and this didn't seem user-friendly to Americans. Upon leaving the meeting, I was attacked at the elevator by a Karaski lady, whoever her name is, saying, "We don't want your money. We don't want you in our store."
Excuse me. I'm sorry, ma'am. Mr. Peterson, I'm sorry. Mr. McLemore?
Can you go to your mic and film?
Mr. McLemore. Mr. McLemore. Miss, do you want to be filmed, ma'am?
I'm just, I...
Is it okay? We just want to make sure. This was a complaint that came to us.
It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. I don't care.
All right, Mr. McLemore, there you go, sir. Thank you.
Okay, so upon leaving the, let me get back to work. Upon leaving the meeting, I was attacked at the elevator by a Karaski lady, whatever her name is, saying, "We don't want your money. We don't want your stores. The city don't give us nothing to bill our stores." She also said that they were the majority. I told her, if they didn't want us to be in their stores, take these stores back to Mexico. Okay. Last Friday, 364 illegal were apprehended in ICE in five Midwest states, Illinois, Missouri, Kansas City, Indiana, and Kentucky. 134 were from Illinois. Out of all those states, 236 were from Mexico. If the president decides to send thousands here to Wakegan, being a sanctuary city, what's the council going to do? Are you prepared? You know a lot of crime will be on the rise. Many people will move. Many people will stay. Yet, many will be waiting to vote, to get new people in your seats. So please, stop turning a blind eye, deaf ear, on these issues. This is real. Thank you.
Thank you. Brother Blanks.
Brother Blanks, founding chief president of Black Abolition Movement for the Month. Couple of issues I want to raise here is with this podium. And first of all, with you guys turning this podium this way, I want to appeal to the mayor and the city council to, I'm going to appeal to you to put the podium back over here and I'm going to tell you some of the reasons why. First and foremost, one of the things you are alienating, really being insensitive to a whole demographic of citizens, who may be speech or hearing impaired, who may be sitting right here, or who may be in a listening audience. They depend on facial expression and lip movement to fully understand and grasp what the speaker is saying. Number one. Number two, as elected officials, to represent your constituents, you should want for your constituents what you want for yourselves. Apparently, you don't want this constituents or the speakers turning their back to you when they're talking. You shouldn't want the backs turned to your constituents. That's just out of respect. Number three. Number three, last but not least, having the podium face this way after it's been over there for many years, can easily be misinterpreted as retaliation against your citizens for maybe not agreeing with some of their views and their opinions. Speaking on the basis of the First Amendment here. And it is not in a public forum, if you're in a public forum or city council, even people have the right to record. You all know that. You can't stop people from recording in a public forum here. But I'm asking, I'm appealing to the city council members as well as the mayor, on behalf of those who are at home, who may be disabled, who are speech impaired, or those who may be sitting right here or with disabilities, to see somebody's facial expression, reconsider putting this backwards because with it sitting there, it is respectful towards you. You're able to see full view of what the speaker is saying as well as it is respectful towards those who may be here who are speech impaired and want to have a full view and a full understanding of what the speaker is saying and engaged in. Thank you all for your time and your attention.
Thank you, Brother Blanks. Lynn Florian.
Your honor, your honor, I was going to wait till after audience time, but I agree with Mr. Blanks. I would like to see it back over there. We don't need any more discord than we already have. I would like to be, if we have to make a motion, whatever, I don't think so. I'd like to have it moved back over there. I was going to wait till after an audience time. I didn't know Mr. Blanks was going to talk about it, but I, myself, I know the rest of the council feels, I'd like it back over there.
Well, let's also be clear that it's not a council decision. We were never, we never had input on this.
Right.
I'd just like to also...
And Mayor, I also, excuse me, Mayor, I also want to validate that, yeah. That's a valid point. Those that may be impaired and can't understand, that would accommodate them.
Yeah.
Ms. Lynn, you have three minutes, please. Thank you.
Standby. Gentlemen, you've had your turn. Please. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. So Condoleezza Rice said, "There is no greater challenge and there is no greater honor than being in public service," as we've just witnessed. Tonight is the last full meeting for some of the council members here. I'm sorry Alderman Villalobos couldn't be here. I wanted to commend him for always presenting a serious, thoughtful reaction to the things that he undertook as a council member. Mr. Tempest, who also is not here, was not only my driver's ed teacher, but he was the first alderman I had in Wakegan as an adult. My first home was on Grove Avenue and Mr. Tempest was my alderman at the time. My current alderman, Mr. Valco, I'd like to thank you for your years of service to our nation and our city, both as a police officer and as an alderman. I really appreciate that. Last but not least, Lisa. Lisa and I went to high school together, so we've known each other a very long time. I'd like to thank you for everything you've done for our city and trying to bring honesty and integrity to our city council. There's nothing I appreciate more than someone who uses their power for good. And I really hold you up as an example of someone who did that. And I just want to say thank you to you and to the other aldermen that will be leaving us. Thank you.
Thank you. Margaret Glasgow.
Good evening. No doubt that the number one complaint with Wakegan residents is about the thousands of potholes. As you drive all over Lake County, not one other town has so many potholes. So I was like, why? I figured it out. Because when you live on Lewis Avenue, you don't need to hear the weather report. You can hear when the plows come by scraping, the metal scraping against the road. So, as you, everyone knows that snow removal means pavement repairs. But Wakegan's snowplows actually are lifting out all that asphalt. We have city yards putting down, covering all the potholes. Well, guess what? Because our blades are not the ones that are supposed to be. So essentially, every time, like just yesterday, they were back and forth, back and forth, and every time, they're lifting because the asphalt is not, it's just like this, it's lifted up, so it's taking it out because the plow blades are not correct. The correct ones that are supposed to be used to prevent that from occurring are high-density molded rubber snowplow blades. They have like a squishy on them. So what happens is that when it comes to a pothole that's been covered up, they just, they're flexible and they go over. They don't pull it out. They're easy, adjust to all road surfaces, increase efficiency, increase safety, and they less frequently need to be replaced as compared to steel blades. I have a picture to prove this. So I have a picture here of a Wakegan snowplow, and you can see it's right on the pavement there, and you don't see that rubber coating. I have a picture of the blades that other communities are using and don't have all the millions of potholes. And if you notice, and there's a picture down here, it's kind of like a thick squishy on it, and like I said, it's very, very good and it does not lift the asphalt on the potholes. I really think that we need to be proactive and smart and use the correct technology on the snowplow blades. And the second thing is that the word on the street, Mayor, as you know Wakegan, boy, I tell you, you can't stop them from talking. I've been contacted by several police officers in regards to an officer who they allege, and I know I did a FOIA on it, if you recall, I came to your attention, had over $100,000, I believe, in overtime. And according to Wakegan police officers' words to me, is that it was...
Thank you, Ms. Karaska. Thank you.
...she has another job during the same time. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane Verratti.
My name is Diane Verratti. I have lived and loved Wakegan since 1972, 47 years. I am passionate about just a few things, my faith, my family and friends, and my community. On April 2nd, our citizens gathered to exercise their right to elect their representatives. Outside interests, people who do not live in Wakegan, but who have amassed large amounts of money through the explosion of the gambling industry, poured thousands of dollars into aldermanic races. Two-thirds of the nine contests were funded by the Wakegan Voter Alliance and the Wakegan Jobs Coalition. Don't be fooled by their names. Wakegan residents had very little to do with their activities. They paid for TV commercials and slick mailers that are not ordinarily affordable by locals who run for office on a shoestring out of desire to serve their neighbors and make our city stronger. These mailers did not stop at mere innuendos or insinuations. They made false accusations against candidates and presented outright lies against proposed development on the western edge of the city. Don't be fooled. Developing Fountain Square is a euphemism for bringing in a casino. But this election was not about a casino. It was all about those interests I just mentioned. You know the people who don't live here, work here, or spend their money here. They just make their money here and they want to make even more. There has been no movement on a casino for well over 15 years. Who knows if the state will ever decide to grant a casino license? Shouldn't our residents have a voice in whether or not we expand gaming? And as far as supporting schools, that acreage sits outside the Wakegan School District. Our schools would get nothing. It could have been worse, but it's bad enough. Wakegan's image, effectiveness, and ability to attract strong, sustainable, sensible development have been damaged. Make no mistake, those thousands of dollars were not merely generous gifts to candidates who will soon sit and help make decisions that will affect the future of our city. That money came with expectations and very long strings attached. The good people of Wakegan may have taken a hit in this election, but we're here and we're determined to stay the course. There will be other elections and opportunities for independent thinkers to stand together and fight for the right to elect our own representatives. And I can guarantee this, the soul of Wakegan will never be for sale and partisan politics has no place in local elections.
Hello. On April 5th, the county health department put out a press release that air testing for ethylene oxide in the air surrounding Vantage and Medline would take place. This is a huge step forward and was recognized as such by Congressman Schneider on the House floor in Washington DC. The hope of the county health department is to begin air testing by June 1st. This, I know, is moving quickly and into unprecedented territory. However, I can say that without fail, our leaders have stepped up to fill the void that has appeared due to state and federal inaction. I am confident that you will do what is necessary to continue to assure and protect the health of your constituents. It is with that in mind that I must ask you to begin assembling a contingency plan to deal with ethylene oxide emissions if high levels are detected. I know that ATSDR is going to be performing a risk assessment based on testing, but I do not want the city council to be caught flat-footed. We would hope that officials at the state level would step in if elevated levels are found, but if this process has taught us anything, it has showed us that this is not a sure thing. I urge you all, and especially the newly-elected aldermen, to begin planning solutions if this potent carcinogen is found to be present in our air. At this point, we find ourselves in a holding pattern, but once this is ended and we have data to begin to address this issue, we all need to be ready to act. Thank you.
Thank you. Annette Darden.
Hi there. My name is Annette Darden. I am a Wakegan resident. I do not want to be filmed.
One more time, sir, you're going to be escorted out. Unfortunately, ma'am, they have the right to do that, ma'am. Okay, thank you.
Okay. I am a Wakegan resident of the ninth ward. I'm also an educator in special needs, a public servant, and community volunteer. I am here tonight to address what I see as misdirected anger, attempted intimidation, including hateful actions, and speech infesting our city. I like to begin with a positive example, though, of properly-directed concern and... They are a grassroots team formed by concerned parents in our neighborhoods that simply demand clean air for us and our children, concerned about cancer. They saw, they saw a problem and knew there were obstacles ahead of them, but they did not give up. They did research, worked together to network peacefully with others, and formed strong relationships to make change. They remain professional and presented facts, clear facts, from reputable resources. They are respectful to elected officials and allow them to do their jobs as they express their opinions, thoughts, beliefs, and concerns. I believe this group and these individuals are a model for activism and advocating for the people. As I teach my kids in school, let's problem solve, which is a basic elementary-level tool we use to teach our youth, that it's important when they see a problem, they can also resolve it without pointing the finger or blowing things out of proportion, that they too have the power to fix it. It's what our city and people deserve, to truly see the city of progress. I'd like to close by giving one last example of someone in our city that took tragedy and turned it into a blessing to our community: the Medina family, who lost their daughter to leukemia a few years back. They are now extremely involved in giving back charitably. The family and close friends build little libraries from scratch together, and they place it to share in the neighborhoods. They donate to the community, and they are a living example of a we can aspire to be. I look forward to seeing our new city council get sworn in on May 6th and see what changes they can bring to the city together. I also pray that those that find it necessary to operate by intimidation and hate, to see the error in their ways, and to change for the better. And you are who you associate with. Thank you.
Diana Burdette.
Good evening. I'm here with Clean Power Lake County, and I am fighting against ethylene oxide in Waukegan. I continue to come and make requests. What right do I have to want the best for the community and humanity? Today, I come in here and request that the City of Waukegan submit an official comment to the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, demanding that they use their authority to impartially use the best available science in planning, permitting, and rulemaking. The American Chemical Council is attempting to apply corporate-funded pressure to the EPA so that they can reverse their 2016 Integrated Risk Information System findings of elevated cancer risks, and essentially make several health crises disappear. The effects of this reversal will be detrimental to the health of our community, but not only our fence-line communities, also that of Louisiana's St. John the Baptist Parish community, Delaware's community, and the twenty-six other communities nationwide experiencing elevated cancer risks due to ETO. All predominantly communities where the minority is the majority, and poverty levels are above national average. Environmental justice communities that do not have their own voices to raise. I am asking you to join other environmental justice voices: Union of Concerned Scientists, the House Energy and Commerce Committee, and many more, such as that of Dr. Baum's, a medical professor and member of the California Air Resource Board, who wrote, "It's deeply troubling that the very people at the helm of the Trump Administration's EPA responsible for protecting public health and the environment are now pursuing a course that would make the air we breathe even more hazardous." I am asking the City of Waukegan to join these voices and demand that the best data available be used for planning, permitting, and rulemaking. Please submit your comment to the EPA before April 26th. I have emailed the comment details to Thomas Mailer. I hope that you join the many voices working for environmental justice.
Thank you. Mayor, that concludes the audience time.
Item four, motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Taylor, to adopt resolution designated the month of May as Historic Preservation Month. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman May. Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Motion by Alderman Bolton, second by Alderman Seager, two, uh, proclaiming April is Fair Housing Month. Are there questions to the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Now, I'm going to stop. There's anyone here from the Historic Preservation? We'll make sure we get that to them then. We'll make sure we get that to them. Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Valco, proclaiming Comcast Cares Day, May 4th, 2019. Are there questions to the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Motion by Alderman Moseo, second by Alderman Taylor, to ratify the appointment of Charles R. Perkey to Waukegan Civil Service Commission. Are any questions? Oh, skip it. They are? All right. Perk, give me one second. Comcast Cares, you're here? There you go. We got the resolution?
Yes, sir.
All right. Go to the podium, I'll meet you. You want to read the resolution? We'll read it for you. Thank you, sir.
Proclamation: Comcast Cares Day, May 4th, 2019. Whereas Comcast is an active, committed, and engaged member of the Waukegan community and surrounding area, as demonstrated by eighteen years of Comcast Cares Day service in local communities and over half a million volunteer hours, and whereas Comcast supports the core American value of volunteerism through partnerships, grants, and service activities that empower individuals and communities, and whereas Comcast established Comcast Cares Day in celebration of service and commitment to year-round volunteerism, leading to it becoming one of the largest corporate commitments to volunteerism and service in America that brings employees, families, friends, and community partners together for a common purpose and mission, and whereas Comcast is celebrating its eighteenth Comcast Cares Day and has reached important milestones, including more than one million volunteers and more than six million service hours and more than ten thousand projects since Comcast Cares Day inception in 2001, and whereas Comcast Cares Day promotes a spirit of corporate responsibility thanks to the hard work, dedication, and service of Comcast volunteers in the Waukegan community, and whereas Comcast welcomes members of the community to join them on Saturday morning, May 4th, at 8:00 AM at the Waukegan Municipal Beach to help clean one of Waukegan's most beautiful recreation and tourism destinations. Now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Cunningham and members of the City Council of Waukegan, Illinois do hereby proclaim May 4th, 2019, as Comcast Cares Day in recognition of the service to Waukegan and our local community and the engagement of workers, families, and friends in a common purpose in our community, adopted this fifteenth day of April, 2019.
Did you want to say anything about some of the places, activities?
Your Honor, Alderman, thank you very much, and citizens, too. You're partnering with the city and with the Lake County Alderman Society. This is your first Sharing the Shore Waukegan Beach Initiative program, and we're just happy to be a part of it. We're going to do a spring cleaning and get it all started so that everyone can enjoy the beach. And I would say, having been there before, go visit your beach. It's absolutely beautiful, natural-environment place, and you should really enjoy it as part of the city of Waukegan.
Thanks, Your Honor. Thank you.
We'll also be at a safe place. We're staging in Waukegan. It's our second year of going to a safe place. Comcast Cares Day is our national day of volunteerism, and we're just making these programs available.
Thank you very much. Take care. Thank you. All right. All right. Got a motion by Alderman Moseo, second by Alderman Newsom, to ratify the appointment of Charles R. Perkey to the Waukegan Civil Service Commission. Any questions to the motion? Let's get a roll call, please.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Perk, I'm calling, I mean, Mr. Commissioner, please stand, sir. Everybody get a chance to. This is, now, this is triple duty for you. Fire chief, no, firefighter, fire chief, building commissioner, now on the Civil Service Commission.
I hope it works out here.
I know it will. Thank you. Thank you for standing. All right, take care. Thanks, y'all. All right. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Bolton, to approve a deterritorial report. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Do we need a bid for this?
We got a motion for this communication.
All right, this was just communication. Items open for bids. I think bid's going to be this Friday? Is it this Friday?
There's a number of them, like, linked to it.
Okay. All right. All right, Public Works.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Alderman Newsom, yes.
Item A, motion to authorize a proper city official's permission for the release of letter of credit, number 1130, for the Riverland subdivision off-site improvements which have been completed and approved, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Taylor. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Item B, motion to authorize a proper city official's permission to waive the bidding process per Section 2-458, subsection I-1 and subsection I-7, and to award a contract with Lakeland Larson Elevator Corporation of Waukegan, Illinois, for the amount not to exceed $145,455. This will be for elevator repairs and modernization of the freight elevator, which requires specialized services at the water plant, which will need to be operational for water plant improvements. Funds will be charged to bond proceeds and line item 555-916027018, 2018 C Water and Sewer Bonds, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman May, to approve. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Item C, motion to authorize a proper city officials to approve change order number one, the amount of $50,000 with East Jordan. The contract was previously approved on April 16, 2018, for an amount not to exceed $35,000. This will be for an increase of $15,000. Funds will be charged to line item 555-915525493, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Bolton. Any questions to the motion?
Shut the door, please.
Roll call, please.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye. And that's it, Your Honor, for Public Works.
Uh, Finance Committee. Alderman Valco, you want, Alderman Newsom to take. Alderman Newsom. Alderman Newsom.
Okay, Finance Committee, item A, motion to renew the annual maintenance contract for Blackboard Connect for government under GSA Contract Number GS-35F-0554M for an amount of $39,158, funding from line item 555-915924438, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Valco. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Item B, motion to approve a resolution to settle litigation and further to approve the acquisition of property located at 2105 and 2107 Georgetown for an amount of $7,500, funding from line item 242-524-226491, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Valco. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Item C, motion to authorize a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with Beach Park, Zion, Winter Harbor, and North Chicago, funding a sea map study for a proposed lakefront trail, and to further authorize the payment of $3,252.71 to the Village of Peak Beach Park associated with this project, funding from line item 251-825124489, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Seager. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Item D, motion to authorize a proper city officials to execute a grant agreement with Lake County to participate in the Lake County Workforce Development Program, WDP, to provide job opportunities during summer of 2019 for economically disadvantaged youth ages 14 to 18 years of age, and this will be paid for by Lake County.
Okay, motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Valco. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye. And that's all, Your Honor.
Okay. On item A, Labor Relations, we're going to do that in the omnibus. I'm going to motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman May, to omnibus items A, B, and C, for the Labor Relations Committee. Alderman May, could you please read those, ma'am?
Sure.
Thank you, ma'am.
First item, a motion to approve FLSA Section 7G memorandum of understanding to modify the collective bargaining agreement by and between the City of Waukegan and the Waukegan Police Benevolent Labor Committee Unit Number 42 for voluntary off-duty assignment during the 2019 Ravignia Festival. Item B, motion to approve a FLSA Section 7G memorandum of understanding to modify the collective bargaining agreement by and between the City of Waukegan and the Metropolitan Alliance of Police, which represents the lieutenants, for voluntary off-duty assignment during the 2019 Ravignia Festival. And item C, motion to approve FLSA Section 7G memorandum of understanding to modify the collective bargaining agreement by and between the City of Waukegan and the Metropolitan Alliance of Police, representing the sergeants, for voluntary off-duty assignment during the 2019 Ravignia Festival.
All right. Are there any questions to the motion? So first, we're going to, the omnibus first, that's the first? So, you need a roll call or a voice vote? All those in favor of the omnibus?
Aye.
All right, now you will be voting now for the actual items A, B, and C. And the reason we're doing it that way, they're all are the same things. All right? Roll call, please.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item nine, insurance. Alderman Taylor.
Thank you, Your Honor. A motion authorizing the proper city officials to sign an extension contract for employee insurance benefits, brokerage, and consultant services to the Horton Group from January 1st, 2019 to May 31st, 2019 pursuant to the request for information issued by the Human Resources Director, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Moseo. Motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Mosio. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Item 10, Alderman May.
Judiciary Committee, the Judiciary Committee recommends the motion to approve the annexation of 14845 West York House Road. And I so move.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Velco. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
All right.
Your Honor, new business, I'd propose, excuse me, I'll make a motion for an omnibus, except for taking out item B, 'cause I know there'll be a few Aldermen against that, but everything else seems to be pretty...
Okay, we're doing it. Uh, there's a motion on the floor for omnibus. Motion by Alderman Mosio, second by Alderman Taylor, to omnibus items 12A, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, and J. Are there any questions? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alderman Mosio, you, I'll read those, I'll read those. All right, I can read them. All right. Motion to exercise a power granted by Section 8-1-7 of the Illinois Municipal Code to authorize mayors for the city officials as designated by the mayor to make only necessary and essential expenditures during the first quarter of the 2019-2020 fiscal year on the basis 25% of original annual appropriations made for the 2018-2019 fiscal year as presented. This temporary spending authority shall automatically expire July 31, 2019, or until adoption of the 2019-2020 fiscal year appropriations ordinance. Motion to approve as presented in ordinance, I'm sorry, we're taking that one out.
We're taking the other.
Motion to grant permission for the Home of Deinger Post 281 of the American Legion for their annual distribution of puppies May 24 through May 27, 2019. Motion to approve vendor payments dated April 15, 2019, a total amount of $1,354,099.62. Motion to approve regular payroll dated April 12, 2019, a total amount of $1,480,924.2. Motion to approve elected officials' monthly expenses in civil service payroll dated April 20, 2019, a total amount of $6,891.66. Motion to approve IAAF Uniform Allowance Payroll dated April 12, 2019, a total amount of $41,900. Motion to approve PBOC Holiday Payback Payroll dated April 12, 2019, a total amount of $10,923.12. Motion to approve local 150 comp time cash payout payroll dated April 20, 2019, in a total amount of $2,603.7. Motion to approve final cash out, name listed on the agenda, payroll dated April 20, 2019, in a total amount of $37,277.29. Are there any questions to the motion? Now, you're gonna be voting on the actual motion that is granted. All those, uh, uh, no, I need a voice, voice...
Now, we have money, so roll call.
Roll call, please.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
All right, motion's passed and carried. A new business, 12B, got a motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Mosio, to approve as presented ordinance creating one F1 class liquor license for Louis Sitko. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
May.
Motion's passed and carried. Items 13, ordinance is there being done. Items 14, closing items, Alderman's time. Madam Clerk.
Alderman May. Thank you. Um, I usually like to answer topics that come up during audience time. So, bridge development, I don't know if Mr. Hauser's still here, but that was a well-deserved, Waukegan and proud, kind of surprising. I think it's the first time we've had a business developer up here, but, um, bridge development in the Ninth Ward has brought great tax revenue to the city of Waukegan and water revenue, and, and there's vacant land being developed. So, kudos to Bridge Development, that partnership started, you know, a long time ago, the, and, and, you know, we annexed that property into the city of Waukegan. So that's been a really successful, um, project that I think at least two, maybe three administrations can be proud of, that they've ushered it along. So thank you to everyone for that. The podium, yeah, I thank you, Mayor, for moving it back. I just wanna be very clear, and there's, this mayor, the other mayors have moved the podium around the front since I've been here, but the city council has never had any input on where the podium goes. So, just to make that clear, we never vote on it. It's just a decision made administratively. The Burdats, Dylan and Diana, thank you so much for staying on top of the ETO situation in the city of Waukegan. Diana was on Channel 7 this week. I don't know if you caught it, but I have it reposted on my Facebook page. So, you know, thank you, you're a tireless warrior, and we're really proud and happy to have you in our community. So thank you. Ms. Verratti, I've been wanting all week to talk about the elections and video gaming and all the different things that have been happening in our city. And at the end of the day today, I just didn't write anything, and I just thought, you know, everyone's probably so tired of hearing me beat that same drum. Your speech was eloquent, and I thank you for your words. There's a lot of us who will continue to take complete ownership for this city, and we care about our community, and just 'cause I won't be sitting up here anymore doesn't mean that I won't still be involved, and especially on that issue. And then, I'm sorry that Ms. Darden left, but she gave me a very pointed look at the end of her speech, and I'm not quite certain what that was, but I'm sure it stems from the election. So I'm, I found that interesting, coming from a candidate that had mailers went out with blatant lies on them against my colleague, who I stand by, Ms. Taylor. But I would be welcome any conversation with her personally at any time in the future. And then my final comment is regarding the census. We've had several discussions about the census tonight. So after a census is done, a community, a municipality has so much time to redraw their district, the wards. The congressional districts get redrawn. Everything gets redrawn after a census, 'cause you have to balance out the population for proper representation for your elected officials. I would like to put a bug in the mayor's ear, 'cause I won't be here when it happens, but I was here for redistricting after 2010, and I was very green and didn't really understand it. And I've read a lot about it since. And I would like to encourage the mayor and the city council to consider involving the community in redistricting the wards of this city. We have some, if you look at a ward map, you might see some funny things sometime, little fingers that go here. And it's a difficult process, it really is. Um, there's a tool, it's the ESRI redistricting tool. It's a map, it's a GIS, a mapping tool. And it allows for community input. And some communities have used this tool, and it also shows the community what a difficult process it is when you're trying to balance out your community between nine different wards. It's not an easy task. But it often gets, that, that subject often gets, um, becomes an issue of corruption, and people accuse politicians of drawing lines to benefit their candidates, those such a thing, political parties. And I think by involving the community and exposing them to the process, we can put all that to rest. And so you have, obviously have a lot of time. I don't think we redistricted till 2012, after the 2010 election. It took a couple of years. But I just wanna put that bug in the air. There are tools out there, mapping tools, that will allow the community to be involved. And I highly encourage this council to move in that direction. And, um, that's all I have. We'll see on May 6 for the swearing-in of our new council. Thank you.
Alderman Velco.
No comment tonight.
Alderman Taylor.
I just wanna take this opportunity to thank the residents of the Ninth Ward for their incredible support. The flowers, the text messages, the emails, the songs. I now have developed a great love for Elton John, I'll be honest. I mean, I, I just can't express how thankful and grateful I am. So, thank you to the residents who came out. Thank you.
Alderman Bolton.
Okay, as being proactive in the First Ward, we're gonna have cleanup on April 20. And this is the combined efforts with the firefighters and the Park District, and we're gonna be meeting in Washington Park. And the cleanup will start 9 to 12 p.m. And in addition to that, the Robetti Center, or program, will also be doing a cleanup in the First Ward on the 18th. So, residents and constituents, please come out. Thank you.
Alderman Seager.
Yes, on the Second Ward, we plan, I'm in the process of working with Susan Figuerrel on placing dumpsters within the Second Ward, especially the east, east section. And, and I am actively getting volunteers together to... We were shooting for the 20th, um, to get that east side cleaned up. That's Elm Road, Washington Park, uh, let's see, 10th Street, 11th Street, 12th Street, 13th Street, Lyons Court, part of 14th Street. It's a, it's a big section of the Second Ward. And I will make my announcement when I get this all completed. And thank you very much. And one more, one more thing, Mayor. Yesterday, we, we got dumped on. And Public Works, the drivers all worked very hard to try and clean up the streets, especially through the Second Ward. They did a pretty good job, but the residents have to cooperate. We have uneven ordinance. If you see a plow in your ward, get out and move your car. Hell, there was five cars on one street, Cedar Avenue, and the driver couldn't get through. Now, what happens if the fire truck has to get down there? Or a rescue squad? If a plow can't get through, they're not gonna get through there. It's a safety issue, and I'm, I'm very concerned about it, and we have to address it. And I'm just mentioning it, throwing it out, throwing it out there, because I was there. And that, you know, that, that poor driver, he just said, you know, "I can't get through." And those people would not come out to move those cars. Well, I'm gonna step up to the base here and ask the public to help me along on moving these cars when we have a heavy snowfall. That snow was wet. Like I say, how you gonna get a fire truck, a rescue squad, a police car? You, you can't. Thank you very much, and everybody have a good evening.
Alderman Mosio.
Is that rain? Oh, jeez.
Joyce, you had a, Joyce Evans, you had a great comment about that. I'm not aware of any kids doing that, but it doesn't, it does not surprise me the way some of these young people act, the way they just walk down the middle of the street and things like that. I know we used to have a babysitting ordinance on the books where if we picked up a juvenile and brought him to the police station, parents had to come and pay a fine to, to get them. I don't know if it's still there, but we can definitely check with the police department. If not, maybe we need to revisit that. But I agree with you. I mean, that, you putting it in the context of someone just hitting a child that does that, I mean, I don't know why we would run out in the middle of the street, I mean, but I, I thank you for that, and we need some more, maybe enforcement on that. With that being said, all the Aldermen have to do is look at their significant incident reports from this weekend. And I'm gonna say it again, if you can't run your business, you don't need to be in business. We cannot have continual operations of business where the cops have to come to deal with violence and fights. Mayor, I want you to put the hammer on these places that have patrons that can't behave. We have far too many establishments that have been in this town forever, and they never have to call the police 'cause their clientele can't behave, whether it's in the building or in the parking lot. And it's only gonna get warmer, and it's only gonna get wilder. I want the hammer on these people. Again, if you can't run your business, you don't need to be in business. We need to put the hammer on these people. And again, I'd like to thank the Burdats for all their work with this ETO. The knowledge of it is, is very technical and way over my head. So that's why I like to take him out to the hallway and pick his brain about things we need to possibly do. So I thank you so much for your hard work on that. That's all, thank you.
Alderman Newsom.
Mayor.
Uh, uh, sorry, go ahead, Alderman.
I'm so sorry.
No, 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 go ahead, go ahead.
I forgot to make one announcement. On, for the Comcast Cares Day on May 4th is also the kickoff for the Sharing Our Shore program.
Oh, yeah.
The mayor and I were here this Saturday with the Lake County Audubon Society, and I'm gonna volunteer with them this summer. And so we're having our kickoff from 1 to 3 at the Waukegan Beach. Um, Lake County Audubon Society's gonna have a presence at our beach the entire summer, and in a partnership with the city of Waukegan. So May 4th, 1 to 4, we'll be down there too, after the Comcast beach cleanup. Thank you.
You will not, hold on, you will not believe how many people are so interested in the, the birds, and it's, it's amazing. But before we go, Aldermen, do not leave, because we have, we're our students, who are doing their, what's their project here? They're doing their...
Government.
Service credits. Service credits, right? Stand up, stand up, my students. Stand up, come on.
Come on, Kirk, stand up.
Yeah, oh, oh, wow! And it's for a government class, right? This is for a government class?
Yes.
All right, you got a lesson tonight, didn't you? Hey, welcome. Alderman, can you help us, can you help us out? They need, you need signatures to let their teacher know that they did attend tonight, 'cause if not, we're gonna be here all night trying to sign them. All right, so you're gonna get everybody. All right, thank you, thank you very much. The last, the last but not least, everybody. While the snowplow is over with, street sweeping has started. And we're very, wanna be very, very clear to Alderman Mosio's point, we're gonna be extremely aggressive, extremely aggressive when it comes to cars, who will not move for our street sweepers. Let me tell you why. If we do not take those brushes and go toward the curb where the, the inlands are, correct, Mike? Then that could potentially block those, or the debris and things could block up our, our lines. AKA, we have to come in, tear 'em up. We need your help. Now, we have something on the books, similar to our, our, um, our two-inch snow. We can remove the cars. We're not trying to go there. But we, we're, myself, Waukegan Police Department, particularly neighborhood policing, and Public Works are putting to, putting together a, a, a pro, not a program, but a, an actual, uh, uh, schedule where street sweepers will be coming down all of our streets. We have three of them right now. Uh, we're looking to, to maybe adjust some hours, Aldermen, so they can start early to get, we have to get this done. You wonder why there's piles of water sitting at the corners? Because they're blocked. The street sweepers, we have a good, regular schedule. We must get this done. I'm gonna let everybody know now. If we, if we continue to have problems in these neighborhoods, we're gonna get aggressive with moving your cars. It's gonna cause a little, some folks are gonna be upset. We understand. But if we don't do this, you're gonna be more upset because of the maintenance that's gonna cost in order to, to, you know, to get this done. So we're asking you, right now, Emily, please, I wish this would be the front page news of tomorrow's news page about the street sweep, but I know it won't be. Uh, uh, I'm asking all of, I, don't, you're not gonna believe this. Mr. McLemore, Mr. Peterson, get on your Facebook. Come on, Mr. McLemore.
I ain't even the media's tab.
All right, then. I'm asking everybody, every page, every, what is that, the tweet, whatever, please help us out.
Face chat.
Well, that's, we wanna get, we wanna get this schedule out, so everybody, I think is typically after the garbage pickup, but let's get us a confirmed date, so we know when people are coming. We, we need, really need to get much, much better on that. If not, you're just gonna get the main arteries, and, and then, as Aldermen, we're gonna get those calls. All right? With that being said, motion by Alderman Mosio, second by Alderman May, to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. All right, Alderman, before you leave, students, come on up, come on up.